We put the budget that liability rule, liability.
The state of Ohio requires insurance representatives have the same policy jacket for all customers.
What I'm saying as far as the equipment, they don't know, state of Ohio doesn't go in that detail as what's all over the sky.
It will be done. I sent on that to one board and they've been sued before for giving advice to trustees and fiscal officer and then the auditor comes in and blanket on now they're wrapped up in a liability, but it's not their responsibility to tell us how to split it out.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. When the list, this list like we have here.
Right, they won't, they won't do that.
Can't, I mean can't, when you give them the list, can't you do fire first and then?
They won't do that. Because it's based on the date that they, that you rented that equipment and when you bought it, so it's a descending list based on the year.
That's not completely obvious down there.
It's not.
It's not the years you hold the place.
Right, especially the buildings, especially when it comes to the property and the buildings. So that kind of doesn't make sense. It makes it just a lot harder for somebody to break it out. Unless we just have a set list and keep track of it.
Okay, well, we need to pay it. I just want clarification of we need to transfer some funds next meeting and we need to kind of go through the inventory, see what we got.
So do you need to include that as a resolution, part of the resolution or just a verbal vote? So you have to finish this one off.
Yes, yes.
All right, roll call on twenty-one dash zero four one.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
And a resolution passes.
I'm sending this one down that has two sheets paper.
Okay, next up, resolution number twenty-one dash zero four-two. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees request or waive the hearing before the Montgomery County Budget Commission for the two thousand twenty-one slash two thousand twenty-two tax information, budget and/or inside mileage. Mileage. Trustees, this is a formality that we deal with every year.
I'd like to make a motion with our resolution twenty-one dash oh four-two to request to waive the hearing before the Montgomery County Budget Commission for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So it's your way with it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so does your quest of what, do you either request it or?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Wait.
I'll second the motion to waive the hearing. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
And a resolution passes. Do you have the form for them this time?
Yes, it's only one person.
Oh, okay.
And it would be against the president. I didn't fill the form all the way out yet. But it's on here. Let me get, this was forty-two, I finished. Today, based to twenty, uh, here's the resolution, I don't know if the Senate's up or what. So last year, I think McLaughlin signed it as president, so I'm assuming he was signed, yeah.
You'll sign it? You'll sign?
It doesn't really matter which trustee might have it.
Okay, next up, resolution twenty-one dash zero four-three. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approve to hire, engage trans-union specialized risk group to provide property identifiers for the code enforcement and zoning departments for an amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. I move to adopt resolution twenty-one dash zero four-three. Any takers on this resolution?
So, I guess I get to say that before we ask questions, right?
If I'm going to open the floor, if you want a second, we can open the discussion on it. If not, it dies.
Did you have the attachment?
So is enough money and without pulling up, taking the paperwork, because I'm allowed to ask, who is there, I'm allowed to ask question?
I'm assuming there is money. Who has the, can you look on that from me, see if it's not? I want to take a view to it for anything.
And which, which line were you thinking about?
One, one thousand, one twenty, seven forty.
No, we haven't used it at all.
How much money's in there?
Seven twenty, is it zero, 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 zero or zero four five?
Zero, 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 zero.
There is, there was twenty thousand appropriated and seven hundred twenty-five twenty rollover. But then there was a seven twenty-five twenty expense, so your current unencumbered balance is twenty thousand.
And then also in the work session, we did discuss that this was put out to multiple people and this is the best price. We didn't just pick this people.
Correct. Justin has three quotes for anyone to review.
I'll second it.
Also, we ran into a bottleneck with sheriff. We thought we had an informal channel to get that identifier and it didn't work out. So basically, that's where we got official ruling from Montgomery County that we cannot get that kind of information to, to trace down a homeowner. So it's a tool that they need to do their job.
That's good.
Okay. Any other questions, trustees? Roll call.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty-one oh four-three passes. Ms. Wu, do you know whether or not, is this a per month subscription or is this a per request, per deemed type thing where we?
Per month, and we get up to one hundred searches a month. So, you know, we'll definitely watch so we don't go over that number.
Okay, resolution number twenty-one dash zero four-four. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby authorize the fire chief to purchase a two thousand ten Rosenbauer engine tanker for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars to include associated equipment and lettering to put in service.
This is the one that was already reset, correct?
So this is a new resolution to?
This is still this, the same vehicle that was reset.
Well, read, read the, why don't you have to read the entirety of it?
Read, read the entire resolution, please.
Okay. Board of Trustees, Jefferson Township, Montgomery County in Ohio, met in a regular meeting on the twentieth day of July, two thousand twenty-one, administrative office located at five eighty Cali Met Lane, Dayton, Ohio, four five four one seven, with the following trustee members present, James McGuire, Roy Mann, and Michael McLaughlin. Where the Board of Trustees have approved resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine, whereas the Board of Trustees retracted resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine in the next meeting, whereas since the retraction, the Board of Trustees now only have one fire engine working regularly, which is a new Rosenbauer quick attack engine. Whereas, the Board of Trustees have been informed, both current two thousand and five Rosenbauer engines have broken down recently and are not reliable. Whereas, a third two thousand and five Rosenbauer engine has been out of service since two thousand nineteen for failure. Whereas, the Board of Trustees are held responsible for providing adequate fire service per ORC. Whereas, the Board of Trustees have already ordered a new engine tanker, but this will not be delivered until two thousand twenty-two. Whereas, the fire chief has identified a used Rosenbauer engine tanker to purchase to serve as a reliable unit in place of two thousand and five Rosenbauer units that are failing. Whereas, the fire chief will work with the township administrator to finance this purchase for cash well over its years of operation. Whereas, the Board of Trustees approved the acquisition to include portable equipment needed to supply the vehicle in the painting, wrapping, and/or lettering for identification and place the unit in service as a first out unit. Therefore, be resolved, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby authorize the fire chief to purchase two thousand and ten Rosenbauer engine tanker for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand and associate items to put into service.
In the middle of the resolution, uh, middle of whereas is, you stated in the paper up here, whereas the Board of Trustees have already, where the Board of Trustees already have ordered a new engine tanker. We ordered it? I thought we still heard the RFP, RFP position.
That was a misprint. You're correct. Make a correction to that resolution.
So, so, so if we, so they continue to say, but will not be delivered until two thousand twenty-two, how can that whole sentence be valid if we have not ordered it and we don't know when we're going to get it?
Because every manufacturer that, that's picked up the RFP said they're at three forty to three sixty-five from the date of order. Now, we've asked, in the RFP, we've asked them to come back with a written guarantee of how many days it's going to take and a penalty of a certain amount of money for any day over their deadline.
Okay, so we discussed that, you know, we have, I really have one Rosenbauer, the new one that works consistently.
When we order, we need to get this, we got to get this opened up to discuss it. So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to adopt twenty-one dash zero four-four.
We can't discuss it.
We're going to need a second to open the discussion.
We can't talk about it.
No, no.
That's the rules.
If we, there's no use in talking after that if it gets taped.
So I'm going to adopt without the verbiage that says we've already ordered the new engine.
So just drag the, drag the whole line.
Yes.
So we're on the next resolution?
Any seconds on this, trustees? Going twice?
I'll second more strongly. But I want to, I may own the, shall not be right.
All right, let's get back into the discussion, trustee. Are you ready, Chief Ryan, where are you at on the price?
The price? The price is eighty-nine thousand. They dropped it.
So how much equipment is, this, I guess what's left in this resolution give you enough to set up a truck?
I can take what the, the second Rosenbauer that is out of service now. I can take what equipment is on there and transfer to the two thousand and ten. And we've got enough four HOs and inch and three quarter Rosenbones.
So a lot of money we spend for that, we can't take that money and take what we got and make it work. Number one. Number two, this was such a good deal, this has been talked about for several months. This is such a good deal, it'd already be gone. Like any used car on that lot over there, you got a used car on that lot and that good of a buy, it'd be gone. And I've heard from numerous sources that there's numerous things wrong with this, this engine.
Well, I'm glad you have because I've talked to the fire chief and I've talked to the battalion chief.
And we've talked to Rosenbauer manufacturer that built it.
Are we going to see the building?
Well, if we're going to, then the blood was full.
So you're going to take the mechanic with you?
Yes.
And that's what I'd be?
A Rosenbauer repair shop that you hired out of Washington Corvus.
You hired?
Well, you, you used them to fix your Rosenbauer's.
Still, again, you got to learn, you learn from your mistakes in life. And here, so we bought three engines from down, down in Texas, ambulances, several years back before I was in the seat, and we had nothing but problems. We bought used, we bought used, we had nothing but problems. Every now and then, I think we need to wait and take this money and apply it to this new fire truck we're going to buy, and I think we can get by. I'm, I'm just against buying another piece of used junk. Sorry, you know, I'm sorry, residents, if you don't agree with me, but that's just the way I feel, even at home and my own, my own thing. My first car was a used car. When I was sixteen, I bought a used car, and time goes on. You buy used and used, but you learn from mistakes, and we bought used, we bought used, we bought used, and it's, it's not working for us.
Okay, so by that kind of decision, this would be a great meeting to have Kevin Guppard here to see if we should buy another fire truck. Okay, I guess, I'm not comfortable being trustee, counting on every other fire department coming out and doing mutual aid for us. We've got the money to, the residents gave us this money three years ago, and we're still wrestling around with a fire truck.
So you, you take, we have, the chief already said that we have run it worse and one needs a little bit of work. I wrote down what he said. So take the run each a little bit of work and take this money, some thousand dollars, keep that for the new one, and get this, get, get, get another one, get the other one running.
With the supply of equipment that nobody anticipated, the, the problems you're going to have buying anything new right now.
And then?
Why, I had to ask the clerk of how much money she spent paying out on repairs for the Rosenbauer's we have now.
Now, something that I have advocated but never got, is I've always wanted to see the running repair records so that when you start seeing a piece of equipment in terms of no money bid, it tells us from a financial standpoint when it's time to get off. I know we can go through the city of Dayton invoices, the repair shop, and see if we can put a lot of money into that.
We have a solid report, yeah.
But nobody will enter anything into it to give a report, so.
It was done before.
However.
Before I came in, if there was a certain person that was doing anything.
Well.
And they're gone, is that possible? What's wrong? Why is it not being entered in that?
On this vehicle, the chief is going to take a repair person from, that works on these vehicles all the time, going to take him with them, and they're going to check this unit. And if it's not, if you don't feel that it's a fit buy, then they won't, they won't back.
Okay, so Mr. Mann, you were going to propose to change the price, that's what you want to say?
Well, eighty-nine per thousand.
So you're saying not to exceed eighty-nine thousand, still a hundred thousand?
Right.
Well, it's enough to exceed. I think we should put in a lowball offer on it. Ten dollars.
Will we be taking it? Why are you still here?
It's up to you guys. I'm just going to change the resolution.
But with one engine, the running now, you, you have to stop it.
Okay, what, what case?
We can't buy.
So, Mr. McLaughlin, okay, when you call nine-one-one, you're going to expect fire equipment to show up?
And there again, so we have one engine that works, and what kind of labor force we have in the firehouse on the average to move more than one vehicle or one EMS. So if your house is on fire, they come out, they send a fire truck, an EMS out, how much more people are in the fire station to drive this, this, another piece of used equipment?
So you're just going to, how many staffing, how much staffing?
Yes, there's enough staffing to man the EMS, the fire truck, and another truck. I'll give an answer.
How many, how many chief, how many people do you have?
We usually have five on.
Five? Certainly.
Five, yes, certainly.
Still, one fire truck to show up, that's not enough for a barn fire. And the public has an expectation that all equipment is going to show up, and I disagree with this philosophy. The mutual aid should be able to solve every time.
I also believe it will show in a hundred thousand dollars to the drain, and you take that hundred thousand dollars applied to the new one.
It's not down the drain, it's not, I guess, you can't go out and rent a fire truck.
I'm asking you to rent a fire truck, I'm taking that hundred thousand dollars.
Buy something all of a sudden.
We have multiple engines, take that money and get one we have going, running, instead of buying another one we really don't know that much about, that if it was that good of a buy, it'd be gone.
Why don't you guys, the community, what we want, since it's our house, it's not going to be on fire.
I'm sorry.
Trustees, any other questions?
I still need a number before you vote on this resolution.
Twenty-one dash zero four-four.
No, no, the number for the not to exceed, Mr. Mann suggested to change that, huh?
Well, it's not to exceed, so.
I mean, it's up, it's up to you guys to tell me and then they'll vote on it. Mr. Mann, did you want to change it?
I, I give you a figure.
Eighty-nine?
Yeah, eighty-nine thousand.
We can do better than that. Let's go for one. Well, if not to exceed eighty-nine, maybe we could buy it for less.
Okay, so you?
Well, he's going to make a, he's going to look at it and make an offer, but not to kill it.
Well, again, if they don't take it, then you don't give it. That's what you said, but, Mr. Mann, if they won't take it?
Yes, he knows, he knows what, what is, how, dollars that he's paying.
So I'm changing the number to eighty-nine, trustee, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. I need signatures, I'm going to change it, if you guys vote on that.
Okay, just for the record, we'll reread resolution twenty-one dash zero four-four. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby authorize the fire chief to purchase a two thousand and ten Rosenbauer engine tanker for an amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand to include associated equipment, lettering to put into service. Any other discussion before we vote?
Miss Beth, I don't know, I don't know, mine.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
No.
So, so just, so this, this is not the purchase, if you're going to put another revision of the purchase, this is just to go look at it? Or this is, that's okay, you can't purchase, this property has to be unanimous.
Holy shit.
No, it's not.
That is true.
No, I have a vice.
I have a lot of purchases, I have a lot of people.
Okay, let me explain. That's property, that's physical.
This is property.
In the Ohio state.
This is property.
Real estate.
This is property. No, it's not just real estate. I asked, he did the same thing with the Rosenbauer. Mr. Mann wasn't at the meeting.
Trustees.
Mr. Mann was not at the meeting and they had to redo the resolution, no.
Resolution five oh five point two six two, Township Buildings Finance. There's a.
Buildings.
Buildings.
Real estate.
Let it finish.
Let me finish. That's the title. Notwithstanding Division D of Section five oh five point three seven of the revised code, or any other statute of the state, the Board of Trust, the Board of Township Trustees of any township, by unanimous vote, may adopt a resolution allowing the township to contract the purchase of equipment, buildings, and sites for the construction of buildings or any lawful township purpose. The Board may issue, by resolution adopted by unanimous vote, securities of the township financed purchases and instructions made. Appears to me, and I did see the email from Nathaniel.
Okay.
From the previous time, because Mr. Mann did not sign it, it did not go, we had to redo it. That is.
Trustees, I'd like to address you for a minute.
Hey.
That resolution says may and can. May and can is an option. That's under the Ohio law. So you have option of may do it or can do it, not required to do it.
That's not what they said.
And that's exactly what, that's exactly what, what.
So now, what happened with the Rosenbauer purchase?
Are you aware?
You did today?
Are you?
No.
So what you did today, but we got a reading. We got a reading from Peterson, attorney Peterson for the township, gave me a, a letter that says property includes.
Property, yes, but.
Would you let me finish, Mr. Wolf? I'm talking. Property includes equipment and it has to be a unanimous vote, and I have the letter from Mr. Peterson, if you'd like me to give you the.
May or can.
But didn't I say anything?
That's what he just read.
In the letter that I have a feeling.
It doesn't matter, it's what the law says.
It doesn't matter. They did it with the Rosen, Rosenbauer.
I'm not arguing. Rosenbauer is not a legal attorney, they're not a legal attorney.
What are you doing? I'm not arguing, you mean. That's what you mean, because I'm not arguing, that's what it said.
So where are you going to vote, trustees?
So this is not a good, it's not a unanimous vote, so it's not a unanimous vote, so it doesn't pass.
No, it passes.
Unanimous vote does not, it's not a unanimous vote, it doesn't pass.
It does.
Are you a trustee?
Deformed.
I'm not legal representation.
You're not a legal representation, you're not legal representation. There's no legal in your job.
Show her can. Not your will.
It's not, this is, this doesn't pass, it's not unanimous, it's the revised code.
It's done. Heaven forbid that somebody's house doesn't burn to the ground while we hurry.
Are you threatening them? Are you threatening them?
Well, I'm just going to yell at it, burn it to the ground.
Yes, you're threatening them, that's what you're doing.
Look stupid at the board.
That's what you're doing, you're threatening, you do look stupid.
They're burning, you said it was dead. They don't care. That's wrong. But, Mr. Mann, you, you said you wouldn't go vote for that, you turned around and you did, the opposite of what you said, and that is wrong. That's wrong.
Let me say this, this is, this is.
You're running.
He bought an engine that he's running with, and one engine is not enough to take care of.
So you're going to buy another one that's used, that's going to break down, if the track record holds, you're going to buy another one that's going to break down instead of saving that money to buy. instead of saving that money to buy a new one.
They took a McKee for the...
Somebody wants to bring this up in citizen comments, you can do that.
But this is not a...
We've already voted this out.
Well, we'll take it to the board. And it's not...
We'll remember that, because you had that confirmation, Mr. Mann, before.
You have no voting.
Listen to talking.
You don't have no voting, Mr. Third, Fourth trustee, not in Jefferson Township, Mr. Wolf. You're the trustee in Clay Township, not Jefferson. Remember that. I've told you that several times. This is my only one.
Welcome back to the old Jefferson Township meetings.
No, this is not how it used to be.
All right, resolution number twenty-one dash zero four... Okay, resolution number twenty-one dash zero four-five. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby agree to purchase a two thousand twenty-one Ford F-four-fifty Type One diesel ambulance from Frasier Limited for the price of two thirty-seven, five seventy, which was submitted proposal number Q's in Queen two one oh seven, the dash zero zero one. And this proposal meets all RFP and AFG requirements. Move to adopt twenty-one dash zero four-five.
I'll second the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Discussion?
Yeah, so there's no, we're looking for the money amounts on the resolution, all I see is the total. Does it stand in here how much the grant is paying and what we're paying out of our pocket? Does that, does that...
I'd say that in a resolution, because that's not, wasn't in the RFP.
Okay, so do we have any, okay, so do we have any idea of the total of two thirty-seven, five seventy? How much of that is being paid by our taxpayer dollars, and how much of it's the grant? We should know, get an idea of what we're doing there.
You will not know that till you go to place the order.
Okay, so how much was the grant?
Two hundred and, what, what was it?
Two thirty-seven, five seventy.
No, no, it was less than...
That's the price of the ambulance.
Oh, one night, I believe Chief once had that information and never shared it with all of us.
But we can't go with that, because we got to have that with us, that. I mean, that's, he lets us go.